Mr. Felido. Right, right. Well, we also have an issue.
I am aware of that.
Um, does the, I don't know if you're aware, but the ZBA choose to, um, revisit the first variance. So, until we know the results of that, I can figure out the law.
May I leave you this one for Thursday?
Yes.
Twenty-fourth.
One thing I just want to say, if, if they do deny it, then my option is to go back to D E C and reopen the initial entrance.
Okay.
Because now that I am not allowed to mine the old first phase.
Okay.
The noise is not going to be an issue. And that was the whole purpose of eliminating that entrance.
Okay.
So, I've already spoken to D E C and their lawyer, what I plan on doing if, if that's the case, you know, so. We did kind of compromise with the neighbors and for noise, so, but if that's the option, then that's, that's my option.
Okay. So, did you see that in the recent, you closed down the second entrance requirement?
It was for the noise.
But D E C asked you to do that?
Well, they asked me to come up with a solution to, to meet their requirements for the noise. So, that was the easiest solution.
Which, which requirements? For the noise, what are you trying to meet?
You have to meet certain decimal levels for the D E C with all the equipment. So, when they factored all that in, if I was mining in that first phase, they're not allowed to mine it, then I wouldn't have met it using that first entrance. So, that's why we eliminated that entrance and changed our site plan.
So, was it the road, was it the?
It was the entrance road.
It was the entrance road that was causing the noise problem, not the mining in that area?
It was the distance from the house across the street using that entrance road.
The noise level that would have been at the house across the street if you'd used that?
Yeah, but now that we're, we're not allowed to mine in that first phase, there is no noise issue for so far back now. Know what I mean?
If you were to use that road, there would still be that noise?
No, because they calculate all your equipment inside that first phase. And that, that was the issue with all the equipment and the trucks coming in on that road, with everything from mining to everything running.
The combination of the truck, it's hands and noise.
Yeah.
And you're saying you're a loser. It started that noise by not mining in that area.
Well, I'm not allowed to mine in the area.
But the noise.
But we removed that noise issue by eliminating that road, so we kept all the traffic to the south, which, which didn't make sense because then, you know, Lady Cross Street wasn't going to have to see trucks coming in.
Well, the existing entrance is now 1,000 feet, so you would have to get.
I already got some variance for that, so that's what they approved it for initially.
But that's being revisited.
It's being revisited because my site plan has changed because I eliminated that, that entrance road. So, now it's being revisited.
So, I'm just wondering, I mean, it's true, but what are you going to do if they say no?
I'm going to go back to my old site plan, go back to D E C. And I'll have them, they'll approve that site plan.
Yeah, but that still doesn't make.
The noise.
Yeah, it does because I'm, I'm mining all the way in the back.
So, it will be the same site plan then that you had originally because you would be mining in the area that you originally combined, so whether it's a different site plan?
No, everything is the same. It would be the same site plan.
This is the second, except for the road, revised site plan, right? The revised.
And yet confused.
From the line to one knee.
They have it.
The revised, that site plan, because you.
The phases isn't really part of it. It's the entrance road is the issue, okay? All the phases have stayed the same. And in that site planning, the D E C hasn't changed anything because what they do and what you guys do is completely separate. Know what I mean? Their laws and your laws. I'm still approved through the D E C to mine the whole property.
Correct.
But I'm not with you guys.
Right, right.
Well, if they don't give you the variance, then neither road can be used.
But I already have a variance. I have a variance for.
That's what they're revisiting.
No, they're revisiting the second variance, not the first variance, which was already approved.
No.
No, they're revisiting the first variance.
But you have an approved variance.
Correct.
That's the one you'd go back to if for some reason they would take it back.
There's always, but.
Yeah, and they're revisiting because my site plan has changed. So, if I go back to my original site plan that they've already approved, then they can't take the zoning or it's already approved. They gave you a variance based on that, that site plan.
That's what they're revisiting for.
No, I understand. They're revisiting because I changed it. If I didn't change it, if, if I didn't eliminate that entrance road, they're not, they wouldn't be revisiting it, correct? Isn't that the whole purpose of why I revisit it?
A lot of issues, a lot of issues, the noise, the health, there were things that were brought up and also because the site plan had changed. They had eliminated the one drive that was near the top, which when they approved the variance, both driveways were there. That separated the noise, separated the amount of trucks. So, instead of having half of them coming in at the top, we have leaving at the bottom, they're all going to be entering and leaving at the same place, which would increase the noise. That was the reason.
One of the reasons. The other one, how about still the thousand feet?
That's part of.
The thousand feet for mining.
From the entrances.
That's the variance. The, the thousand foot setback between the access roads and the neighbors is what was approved. And so, for the first variance.
Based on my site plan that I used.
Yes.
Now that my site plan has changed, now they're revisiting, is what I was told.
Yes, they're rehearing it.
Uh, well, we're, we're second guess. I mean, it was, you just have to.
Yeah, so we really, I mean, it doesn't mean that we're trying to over, that's the never be approved, because they're rehearing it. Does it seem what the new site plan does to accommodate examining?
Sure.
To, yes.
I know, Susan, I think last time you had some questions for Mr. Felido about, you know, the impacts that helped inclusion, items like that, when I was reading through the meeting minutes. Do you want to go through that now since we're here? Rather we wait for the Z B A to make a determination, come back to you and do another. Whatever makes you comfortable, that's what we're here for.
Who are you?
I'm sorry. My name is Kimberly Steele. I actually live in Scrivell. I'm a construction lawyer and the funny thing is, is that I actually represent municipalities and bonding companies on reclamation bonds. So, and Mr. Felido called me telling me about this case. I'm like, I'm not the type of lawyer you want. I usually go after you. He goes, no, 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 hear me out. So, I also represent neighbors, just like you have here, people who don't want projects in their backyard. So, I call him Gordon and say, listen, I'm going to give you the God of Thomas truth because that's how I roll. Kevin Cox, your attorney, or Tom Turner knows me.
So, you represent him then?
I work with him. You know, I'll, I'll be brief, meaning I went through, I took some of your comments from the last meeting, things like the final minutes. I took a lot of the taxpayers and the neighbors' comments. And then I addressed it through the D E C. And D E C, what you were looking at, it's pretty lengthy, these 12 pages of addressing commentaries. I mean, they spared no expense. They really went through each and every issue and concern. And, you know, I have to agree with the D E C. You know, they didn't find anything of concern or issue. We know our D E C, our local guys are here within 24 hours if we have a problem. That's what they're here for. They're really thorough and diligent. So, that's why, why did not you want us to go through this now? If we could wait for Z B A to make the opinion, come back all at once, whatever's easier for you.
I would say, I, my only opinion is wait and see what the Z B A does here because we have, and we will, we are thorough when we go, we go line by line by line with our laws and we are, but we must, we'll find out what Z B, what happens that Thursday.
Yeah, we have, at least I haven't had a chance to read all of these most recent correspondence. And I'm, because is this something from the D E C?
Yeah.
Their comments?
Yes, the comments, the comments from the comment period.
Take your time and read them. They're pretty lengthy, as I was saying. And they even brought in the New York State Office of Parks and Historic Restoration. So, there's some pretty good meaty stuff in that opinion from the D E C.
When we did the South Tower, went through that, a year or so, we spent time on it. Finally, the people kind of swooped in and just took it. But they had four volumes of their secret, four volumes.
We don't want to do that too.
And it was excellent. And I, it was excellent. And this is about like that.
They spent a lot of time.
But I haven't, I haven't looked in with my own question marks and my post-its and my, you know, check this and research that. I haven't done that.
So, if anything pops up, and Kevin Cox knows how to get ahold of me, if you have any questions, please let us know.
Okay.
Your name was? Kimberly Steele.
Steele?
Yes, sir. Like Runington Steele. Remember that TV show?
S T E.
E O E.
O E.
It looks like, um, D O T is, you say, D O T is recommending a traffic gap analysis. If you guys done that, that might, that's probably something we're going to be asking for. If it does get a rebound.
It can come from the town too, so it's whatever's, your request, and I'll look and find.
Well, it's an accident analysis because that was part of our concern.
Do you have this one?
I do, yeah. We've seen it too. Now, sometimes the municipalities go through D O T and do it themselves, but if you need the applicant to do it, you know, we can do it. That's at your direction.
What is a gap analysis?
Gap analysis, you, what you're doing is just comparing various routes, any ingress, egress routes. So, if you come out of the driveway, you go right, go left, right, right or left. And then you apply time, distance, how long it will take, impact to potential homes, commercial businesses, you know, traffic analysis, accident analysis. You put it all together and say, okay, what's the gap? What's our exposure if, you know, we get into a traffic jam, there's a tie-up, you know, corner 104. So, it breaks it all down for you, like which route is best for these trucks to go.
That's cool.
Oh, it's great. Comes with diagrams, color coding.
Why isn't this something that state would do?
Well, that's what I was saying. The municipality can work with D O T directly or municipality like you, town, to say that the applicant, Mr. Felido, so we want you to work directly with D O T. That's the direction you give. I can coordinate with Mr. Cox on this. It's fine. Whatever's easier for you.
Is that something you can just read this against how you can go with the hearing?
So, this is something definitely we want to.
Yeah. We'd love to go through the Z B A and if we get to the next level.
And what we often do, um, in our thinking of this, once, depending again on what happens in the Z B A, um, is if there's so much to go through, if it will be prepared and we'll do a workshop.
Oh, wonderful. So, we'll have another opportunity to sit down.
A workshop through just this and heading off all our concerns and answering every question that, that we have. It's a workshop for us. It's, it's public, people can come, but it's not a hearing. It's our workshop to go through our questions that we have.
Would you be willing to share your questions and comments in advance so we can prepare and have all the documents ready for you and the information done there?
Yeah, we would just, yeah, we just.
Just take a moment.
Yeah. We're, we're on top of things, so we do that so that it's this and then everything can be, we can have anybody, any experts or anybody else. No mind here.
Are there any additional questions or comments, anything we can just make for you?
I, I, I think we'll be going over it a couple of times if we did. So, I think we'd best just to wait to see what transpires with the Z B A and then we'll do it once. Would be my suggestion.
Okay.
One thing that did happen before, in between this meeting and the last, a lady from the EPA came up from New York City.
Okay.
And it said that in the comments, she and myself and Mr. Kimber and, um, John Clancy.
Yes.
We all walked the same people we lived that day.
Okay.
We all walked the whole property, the lady from the EPA. And again, they addressed it, so you'll see that.
Right.
So, and just, and she confirmed that there was no issues.
Right.
Along with D E C and our accord.
Okay.
And everybody except the president involved.
I asked.
That's the trauma.
I asked her. I was looking for him to fly in.
He's going to ruin it, he's getting hurt.
Some permit informations in there too, that the D E C is, is permitted.
There's a permit and 16 pages.
Yep, the comment, 16 pages. Which I say doesn't even, not after.
But it's actually, those are very, very.
Well done.
Oh, my goodness. It was great. I mean, somebody really put in a lot of high effort.
This is the concern, this is the, and this is definitely.
Right to the point, not founded, just allegation, no evidence, I mean. Yo, it's funny, coming from the other side where I'm usually saying to municipalities, you know, watch out for the bomb, get this, get that. And I looked at this, and, you know, I had the answer, I'm like, it doesn't bother me. This doesn't bother me at all.
This is the concern, this is why we decided this way.
There's a reason why D E C.
Yes. As I did, as I said.
Yeah, but if you have any questions, let us know. D E C is also available too. Yeah. Thank you so much. We'll see.
Thank you. Did you have a copy of that little?
Oh, yes.
I'm fine. You want mine? Is that the minutes?
Yes. All right.
Mine are like the. Thank you. We just get two, the hours and.
Don't you want to be looking at July 21st first?
Yes.
Question.
I do. Are there any questions?
Any minute, can I? Just go, maybe just for a minute. Okay. Just give us a minute, go through our minutes and then do that. Okay, first page, was anybody?
Sure. Yeah.
These are silly little things. This is just capitalization. This one in the D E C. So, second.
All right, in the middle of the first page.
Oh, do you?
Yeah, the, uh, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, line up above the resolution in 2015 H R nine, expected adverse effects.
Please, go ahead.
Sorry.
Three little ones, the three ones.
All right. What do you got on that?
Um, I question this, was that right?
Yes.
This name here was always popping up. Is that right? But I just talked with Steele. Okay. It was just a question.
Oh, under Red Oak Grove.
Oh, you're right.
So, that being, Mr. Bloom presented the survey map, not a survey map.
And I saw that too, but I didn't, I didn't survey it. Okay. Let me just have it down. The next page, this is what we're going to, the tower requirements, the town attorney. Okay, so we did do the, yeah, so the, yeah. For example, this one, I mean, tower requirement. She did do that, but the year inspired.
Just above that, you know, it's another, because it is re-adjusted. It, you either got to have a policy in there or it is.
Oh, a town. So, it's because it's. Oh, dude. Next page. You got anything? Okay.
Uh, what page is it looking at?
Let's see. Yes, he does.
Yeah, uh, I mean, the second paragraph there, third paragraph, Chairman Lele, reiterated a point. The third line, the applicant had conceded earlier in review. Is that the right word?
Conceded.
It should have been like agree.
Review with the D E C. Agree to talk amongst, make the point here. Agree?
Agree would be a bad word.
Just concede is.
As if you're giving up something. Then, uh, down under, wants a member, Bishop Second, sentence there, he was answered.
Yep.
He answered.
He just answered.
You got that right.
Well, oh, I just hit, it's just notes to me.
Under training.
On the next page?
Yeah, training. Very nice word. Because the anticipated. Remise instead of the ten sign.
Okay. The trees there, down to the news, right down there. Oh, yeah.
And what we approved is January 21st, first minutes.
Something, I'll say. All right. That was third.
There's a couple places you have the word up fat, I think it should be effect. On the, yeah, the pile and.
No. Effect.
Effect. Effect is a bird. You have a slide. The effect on the death ends and then also pull the.
Hi. Okay. Now, thank you for your patience. We'll open it up to provincial.
Okay. I just have, we need one more. I just had a question. I'd like to be able to follow the workshop that I have regarding my, I was wondering if the sites correspond to the C. Will that be available on the website in 2012? I wonder if they'll follow.
What?
Okay. Do I send it an email?
They can send it to Lisa Cooper.
Okay. Thanks. And how soon does that become available?
Well, we're, we won't even know if we're going to have one until a week on Thursday.
Okay.
And then we'll have to set it up.
Okay. I just wanted to know if I have time. We can share with you to follow what's going on.
Who is the Z B A?
It's 2:00. Seven o'clock. There's another guarantee, so I'll send it to the Z B A.
Yes, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear completely well what you said. You were asking, were you, were you, Sir J. Fisher, were you asking whether the comments that they would get for the workshop would be available, is that what you're saying?
No, the latest correspondence that they've received.
All the latest correspondence?
Yeah, so because they haven't had a chance to read it yet.
Oh.
And that's part of what that script, we're going to be discussing. And reviewing point by point of the D E C 12-page document so that I want to be able to follow, you know, I know I'm not a real editor, but, um, you know, I want to be able to follow the conversations and you can't do it without having the document. So, that's what I was, I was.
Should the work from Lisa Cooper, Tom, that? We, we got them, we got them tonight.
Right. Right. I mean, you just got them.
They don't do it. It's not CDF. I think we know, it's, it's, it's just seems to show they don't do all that stuff. That would be, you know. That's just, that's the process that we don't always just deal with. It's very, very. It's first release of all this. The town press just helps there. It's a format, it's by the media, it's not, um, including the information law is part of that. It's a whole section. Every day, it's, it's got time requirement, she has five days from time she receives the, um, request to get back to whoever.
So, it's five days. I can view.
Yeah, it's just the FOIA process, the time requirements and how it works.
So, if I send it tomorrow, then it's five days from tomorrow.
Then she responds to you and lets you know a little better.
Okay. Yes.
Actually, Sir J. Fisher, actually, since this is stuff that you've received at this meeting, it comes under the open meetings law, so the five days would actually apply. You should be able to actually even get copies tonight at the meeting. So, just so you know, she should be able to get it very well. But I wanted to ask another question. You mentioned to Miss Steele that you put together, if you did a workshop, would put together questions that you had and she was accustomed with it, you could send her a copy and you said you would. So, in order to let the public, for the public, I would suggest that they go up on the website and that all of us, Ms. Steele, Mr. Felido, and all the citizens, we all see them on the website, rather than having sort of this special relationship between the applicant and the board. In other words, whenever a citizen is asking for access to documents, we throw foil at them, but when, you know, a document is being asked by an applicant, they're not missing for us. So, you know, I, I think that it would be important, since it's going to be, again, from the open meetings law, that the open meetings law says if you have a regularly updated website, we do, we have a webmaster, Leslie Parsons, that things, the materials that are coming for an open meeting should be made available at the website.
Maybe there's a sideline between us and the applicant. I think we should ask.
Yeah. Yes, yes.
Again, if you're doing this thing, we can turn, please raise the issues that I raised, and she'll namely the concept of the open meetings law, means that anything you're going to be discussing at a meeting then becomes, you know, available to us through the open meetings law before the meeting. And the, the open meetings law does not put five days on business. The other thing I was very confused about, and perhaps she's going to get a clarification, because I know I'm supposed to address you, um, there was a statement about Miss Steele working with Mr. Cox. Could you get a clarification for us as to what the nature of that working with is? Is she a social, is she works with him on this case?
No, she cleared up. Clear me.
I was confused. Would you like me to clarify?
Yes.
She said, I can't answer, but you have asked me.
No, that's fine. I'll, I'll dress this way so everyone can hear me.
Thank you.
I'm actually the managing attorney of the Steele Law Firm. I have offices all over this country. I have worked with Mr. Cox in the past 15 years. We have worked together, opposite sides. We're peers, we're colleagues, not affiliated with each other. We don't have special relationships. We are just simply peers in the legal community. Construction law and municipality law happens to be a very small community. I have a question. Thank you.
Okay, I'll let other people talk. I have another question, but I'll let other people talk.
Yeah, I'll ask a question. My name is Carolyn Waterman.
Would you like to stand in please?
Not at all. I'd be glad to, so you can hear me. I know they can't hear much back here, so thank you. I've been a resident of Markville for about 30 years, um, so I'm.
um, the basis for the assessment now of this proposed landmine, and what the basis of the assessment would be in the future if the special permit is authorized and it becomes a commercial use mine. So, if it had verbal indication that nothing changes, but I, I, I would suggest that the planning board would want a document that says yea or nay to that, instead of just listening to me and taking my word, get it from Leslie, would be my recommendation.
So, she's saying that the land that the mine is on would not change in this assessment?
Correct.
She wasn't talking about your land?
Correct. Correct, the Sanford, the Sanford Road lot that Mr. Furleydo has purchased.
Did you ask her about the assessment on your land, whether that would change enough?
Um, I have structures, and I have improvements, so I was talking about the land. Uh, she did mention that if there were structures or improvements on the lot, on the gravel bed lot, that they would be taxed, but the land itself, on the Sanford Road parcel, would not, would not be changed, whether it went commercial or not, in this case. So, thank you for, for listening to that, I would strongly recommend it. The other question that I have is, um, is I have talked with neighbors, it's not clear to me how formal notices are filed by the Town of Sterling in the local publications. So, I don't know if this is directly avenue to question that. I know I see them in the Wayuga, the weekly Wayuga Lakeshore News, but I don't see them in the shopper. Can they be called in the shopper?
They've never been placed in shopper, so...
So, the, the Lakeshore News is a very, very limited circulation. Most people don't get it. So, to me, it seems like it's an inadequate method for formal notification to the Town of Sterling residents. And again, I don't know if that's for the town board, or if I can make reference of it here, that people don't know what's going on.
It's a good point. I mean, that is a town board issue, they make the decision on it, but that's something that we can bring up.
Can, can, should I bring it up to the town board also?
Sure, sure.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank you. Yes.
Don't you vote on your, uh, publication that you're planning on doing that once a year? Because I know where, we do, it's, you know, school, Mr. Brown, on this one, and hold it out, what the publication was on our annual meeting, and what we would publicize on the town board.
I guess doesn't, they, she's saying the town board doesn't do it.
And did I hear you right, that the purchase price is not going to be the new assessed value for the property?
The, the assessed value will not be changed to recognize the purchase price of...
Jesus.
So, you, you said it the wrong way, it's the opposite, that the purchase price does not determine the assessed value of this lot. And whether it's sitting vacant or goes commercial, does not determine the assessed value of this lot.
Mine is just when I'm, I think, my, my thought.
And that's, again, strongly, 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 that's what I recommend, don't take it at my word, we need something directly in handwriting from Leslie Parsons, the town assessor, to help make that decision.
It was my understanding that the purchase price is always the value of this place on a property, and that only when it's purchased for less than, in a foreclosure, do they not bring it down to that value, when it's a, it's a foreclosure property?
Incorrect for the Town of Sterling, I'm sorry, that's...
Incorrect for the Town of Sterling, by, for, for every place else in the world?
I don't know. She said, um, Thursday, Thursday night, then there was...
A place in town.
Not correct for the Town of Sterling, so...
This really doesn't have to do with the town.
Yeah, really, at least, uh, Leslie Parsons, and she's the one to go to for the explanation.
But I did have one more thing. Does the open meeting law then mean that I don't have to foil those documents that you have?
No, we go into the open meeting law, you ask, you say on the open meetings law, they talked about it last night, I'm on a seat in the, in the Marlin, she can get copies for you.
So, I don't have to foil that?
No.
I can just come in now, and I can be available?
Well, I mean, technically, you probably have to then also stay there, but because it's open meetings law, you should get it tonight. So, if you can't get it tonight, then you may ask her to, and leave a message to give to you tomorrow. Open meetings law says you have to have these adjectives for any document that they are talking about reviewing, or maybe considering.
I think we should ask that.
I'm not trying to cause trouble, I'm just wanting to be prepared.
No, no problem, I think you should ask. But the laws on the rest of it, it's a state...
Anything else? Yes?
Yes, my name is Lynn Lyons, and I live at the Towne Grand Bay on 1085. I've come here before, and spoke with you before, and I, of course, am here for after the pit, after the mine is there. We, um, as neighbors, Ms. Bassett is also a neighbor of the area, have gone through a lot with, um, not enforcement of the law. Miss Steele was talking about the D E C being so good, about being there all the time. Well, right here, I have a letter, an email that was sent to the D E C, and it's been now three weeks, and they were going to get back with us right away, and have not. That, this is how nothing really gets done for the people. And I'm here for the people, because of what we go, have gone through up there. We have black issues, they're concerned about their water, we have those issues. I have pictures here, we have three rock spills out there, big rock spills, not just minor, but big. We have pictures of dust that was supposed to have a wheel wash put in last January, it's still not working. The D E C does not do their job. They do not police the area. When you call, you don't get an answer. So, I'm just letting you know, I'd like to, to hand this to you, so you all can see the pictures, the rock spills, and the emails that have not been answered. I just wanted to know, she said that they're there all the time, well, they're not. And only reason I know that is because I've lived here thirty years, and we have had issues that don't get answered.
And that has to do with what facility?
The Grandy Mine.
The Grandy?
And just to tell you, just mines in particular, that, I'm not saying that people are not responsible for mining, okay? We have, we have big issues, and we've had big issues. And the thing that is, who's going to be there to make sure that the law's enforced? That the miners go by the law? And I think what, this is what these people are here for, they're concerned, once it's given, that any, anything goes. It is free range, absolutely. Thank you.
I don't own the eighty-five pit, and I have nothing to do with the eighty-five pit, I'm not responsible for anything there. So, you, you can't compare two different people. It's a completely different situation, I have nothing to do with it. I just wanna make that clear. And I've been with all the other pits before, and, and I dealt with the D E C. If there is an issue, they come out, and, and they, they make you address the issue, you know what I mean? Nothing's perfect, but you might have a, a truck might pull out of the driveway, and the door does open, and the rocks fall on the road, but it's my job, it's my responsibility to clean it up. So, you can't compare it to eighty-five pits, that's, I mean, that's no comparison, it's, it's not my pit. So, I just, I just wanna make that clear.
I think you just asked me a question, who enforces it?
And that's what I'm saying, I said, not everybody is the same.
But I, anytime...
Enforce, finish, finish.
Hey, one of my pits, and the D E C has come out, and, so I don't know what goes on over there, I'm sure that pit is huge, there's hundreds of trucks that come out of that pit. This, this is completely different, the same thing that'd be like the, the pit on eighty-five, it's two hundred and fifty meters huge, and we're talking five acres in a time, and it's not, yeah?
It started out as ten acres, just to let me know.
You know, not, not all the issues, and I understand, there, there, and I'm sure there is issues over there, I'm sure they do have issues, and I understand that completely, but that's not me, so I just wanted to make that clear, that's all. And I'm sure they have legitimate complaints, I do, I do not disagree with that one hundred percent, but, but that's not my debt, and it's not my responsibility.
I guess the question still remains, is who is going to be checking?
The D E C enforces it, that's a good one.
They don't, I can't, you're a child, they can't not.
D E C is gonna come on?
I disagree.
Do we have that from you?
We don't live there, we don't understand.
I, I have a different perception, and I'm so sorry for having decisions with D E C. Um, I actually represent a couple of farmers regarding the, the Taylor Mine Committee, and they were having issues with the ore coming in and out. Um, and we made seven calls to the months of May and August, and all seven calls were responding to immediately with at least two guys on site within twenty-four hours, and that's been my experience with all mines and...
We're a first name, it's people for the D E C, and it's still not...
I, I'm so sorry, I have those issues, that's just never been my experience, I'm just saying.
But you're in a journey, so you have, you have different relationships.
No, a lot of these calls were made by the farmers, property owners, neighbors.
But they're represented.
No, not at the time, not at the time. I'm just saying, I feel terrible you're having these experiences, because D E C is on these things, they don't want the contamination, they don't want the environmental issues, but you're talking about a much bigger mine, much bigger operation.
But you gotta understand, it also stirred up its ten acres, and it's been just made bigger and bigger and bigger and bigger and bigger, and this, that can happen, just...
My property, that's awesome.
Somebody missed a sound on the property, made it bigger, somebody hit a sound on the property, made it bigger, there's no more property here, bye. You say...
There you go.
Sorry.
You expand it.
Not only does it have to, excuse me, Christine, the asset four to four hundred eighty-five?
Thank you.
About a quarter mile from the Grandy Road, a mine doesn't have to be able to expand laterally, it can expand deeper, and that's what causes problems. In 2012, um, our mine, Grandy, was commissioned to mine on the water table. Um, in 2013, by 2014, our in-house filter started going gray, and finally went black, and it stayed black. Um, we had, I know at the last meeting, I found a guy in Hawaii in our well, we cleaned our well with Clorox, New York State Department of Health, Dick Jones came out, he was at our house for an hour and a half on August tenth, and he said at that time, "I believe what is getting in your well is coming from that mine." He's a hydrologist, geologist, I don't mind stating that publicly, it's the truth. He also said, "Don't plan on seeing this in any report." That's what can happen to your wells.
That'll be great. When you do receive a copy of the D E C comments, um, pages three, four, five, six, and seven, that's for three through seven, talk about what are for this mine, okay? Again, it's a much smaller mine, there's going to be testing, testing before drilling, open exposure reports. So, sounds like maybe those safety mechanisms weren't installed on that particular mine, which is odd, because it's a much bigger mine, they are here. So, I'm just putting that out as a point of reference, when you do get your copy of the comments, those are the pages you want to focus on. Three through five, six, seven.
And this has not, at least by my part, has not gone unnoticed, or it will be addressed, because it has always been a question of mine, um, is the D E C and their follow-up, and if something were to happen, where do we, where do we go from there, that type of thing. So, this is still to be researched, but it's, it's in my, it's in my question folder.
Our town supervisor has made numerous phone calls to the D E C and to the owner, to no response either, just don't want anyone to know, just to feel that chill.
I, I have a question, uh, maybe for Steele. Seems like I read somewhere, is, in the, in the negative declaration, that the, uh, town, uh, code enforcement officer has responsibility for making sure everything is done properly. What, what is his role in this process?
The town regulations, right. There's a clear line drawn between what's falling under D E C jurisdiction and what falls under town jurisdiction, and that's, uh, addressed too in the, the committee comments, that, um...
So, the C, uh, has nothing to do with any of the D E C regulations?
Uh, each seven of the comments from D E C sets out the different jurisdictions that you retain as a town, and then what's being transferred or owned by D E C. Now, whether the municipality, Town of Sterling, Code Enforcement, and D E C want to get together, so they look, say, you know, we have this problem, and, and we'll take our way, but we have this problem, you take our way. Now, you have that discretion, I'll yield to internal cops to tell you about that, but if you feel you need to retain a little bit more control, that's something else you can work out with D E C. And that may give you a little bit more peace of mind too, especially with your taxpayers, that's, listen, folks, now we hear your concern, you know, we're gonna play a, a big part in this too. And that's fine, I mean, there's nothing being hidden here. And you'll see the requirements of D E C is giving Mr. Furleydo, especially the water analysis, you know, acid testing, water intestines, handleball of the water table, kind of be done in high season, which is springtime, and it's pretty expensive, and they're there to protect you as well.
Sergeant, I'll go out, I, I...
I just, following your mention of the, uh, soil borries and then checking the water that's there, is there, in your experience with all the other mines that you've worked with, um, such a thing as, um, bonding for people's wells?
The old body I typically see is for reclamation, which you'll have here, reclamation, which is, you know, once all the mining operations are done, the land is put back in a more ipezing way for vegetative growth, which is not what you're seeing here now, because if you pull in that driveway, it looks like no mine, you know, that's just gonna happen.
So, they have bonds for the road, in order to make sure that if there's any damage to the road, that they would, that the town would be protected for their investment in town property, namely the road. But what about the concern of the neighbors on their wells?
When you do get your copy of the comments, those are the pages you want to focus on. 3 through 5, 6, 7.
And this has not, at least by my part, has not gone unnoticed because, or it will be addressed. Because it has always been a question of mine. Is the DEC and their follow-up and if something were to happen, where do we, where do we go from there, that type of thing. So this is still to be researched, but it's, it's on my, it's in my question folder.
Our town supervisor has made numerous phone calls to the DEC and to the owner, to no response either. Just wanting to know, just a collection.
I have a question, maybe for Sheila. Seems like I read somewhere in the, in the negative declaration that the town co-resignment officer has responsibility for making sure everything is done properly. What is his role in-
The town regulations, right. There's a clear line drawn between what's falling under DEC jurisdiction and what falls under town jurisdiction. And that's addressed too in the, the comments.
So the C, uh, nothing to do with any of the DEC regulations?
Uh, each seven of the comments from DEC sets out the different jurisdictions that you retain as a town than what's being transferred or owned by DEC. Now, whether the municipality, town, certainly co-resignment, DEC might get together, say they look, say, you know, we have this problem and, and we'll take our, but we have this problem, you take our. Now, you have that discretion, I'll yield to internal cops to tell you about that. But if you feel you need to retain a little bit more control, that's something else you can work out with DEC. And that may give you a little bit more peace of mind too, especially with your taxpayers. So it's, listen folks, now we hear your concern, now we're gonna play a, a big part in this too. And that's fine, I mean, there's nothing being hidden here. And you'll see the requirements of DEC is giving Mr. Colito, especially the water analysis. You know, acid testing, water intestines, handle ball of the water table, kind of be done in high season, which is spring time. It's pretty expensive and they're there to protect you as well.
Just to share, I'll go out, I, I-
I just, following your mention of the soil borings and then checking the water that's there. Is there, in your experience with all the other mines that you've worked with, such a thing as bonding for people's wells?
The old body I typically see is for reclamation, which you'll have here. Reclamation, which is, you know, once all the mining operations are done, the land is put back in a more i-ping way for vegetative growth. Which is not what you're seeing here now. Because if you pull in that driveway, it looks like no mine, you know, that's just gonna happen.
So they have bonds for the road in order to make sure that if there's any damage to the road, that they would, that the town would be protected for their investment in town property, namely the road. But what about the concern of the neighbors on their wells and bonding to make sure that the water quality of their wells is at the level of current business?
I, I'm not sure how a bonding company, again, I'm putting on my bonding company hat. How we hold out bonding a very hypothetical unknown risk? I don't- It's very similar to, it's very, very similar to insurance. How do you write that in very unknownness?
That's why I brought it up in the last meeting.
But that's why, again, DEC makes very clear what has to be done with this site for Mr. Colito on a regular basis. So there is a benchmark, there are documents, there are drawing tests.
And that's written in the documents that they've just received.
Yes ma'am.
So then when we get them, then we'll be able to read what those specific signs are.
Yes ma'am. And it also goes even further to address specific comments about well contamination. The other thing that falls outside of this, what the EPA does have on their, on their website, some wonderful information about water, well water, well water in mining areas.
Because this mine is right next to the creek. It's not like, it's, and that's where the gravel is now, but yet it's next to the creek. So I don't know how many other mines are right next to this, I don't know if that's true.
DEC comes right out and says there are no issues with this mine next to the creek, next to the water wells. And even with respect to the aquifers, even though so far it said that there's gonna be no issues with this spawning of salmon and trout. There's not gonna be any hindrance to the movement of any animals, including fish. So they went that far with respect to a water analysis. They're not seeing any impact with water tables, quality of water, aquifer, nothing, they're just not seeing it. But they went into great detail about the water.
And that's in the reports that they've just received.
It's in the comments, they took pretty much every public comment and very thoroughly flushed it out.
I think it's important that the public has the same document to be able to follow everything that you're doing. If you're supposed to workshop or whatever, but we also need enough time to be able to read it. Because we have a lot of things to do in life besides working these things. So, you know, we have to get enough time to use it.
If I'll leave up on what I'm just saying. You are in a unique position, the DEC probably doesn't know this, but you actually have copies of my comments to the DEC and your copies of Dr. Young's report. So you can actually see that the DEC did not respond to all of our comments, they cherry picked some. And so when they talked about the water, they took from Dr. Young's report that he was concerned about the water. But they, they then addressed the water as a question of how much water would be taken from the outside well. They didn't think it would be considerable, okay? They didn't think it would be more than what would be needed for permit. And then they said, "You don't have to worry about the well scene affecting us all on the water on site." That isn't what Dr. Young says in that paragraph. He says that the reason you have to worry about the wells is because the removal of the overburden will affect the well of the water table location. In other words, when you take off the earth and you take up 60 feet, it depends on what part of mining you're in, but as deep as 60 feet, that when you lift that, the water table will shift. And therefore, Mr. Colito can be very honest and sincere and he can drill and he can find where the water table is and stay four feet above it, but that doesn't mean that he isn't driving it down. And if he drives it down because of the lifting of the overburden and shifts of the, of the water table, that's what happened, that's where the wells got affected. So in other words, what Dr. Young's comments were not fully addressed. So I ask you, when you look at the comments, since they made it clear that mines were among major ones. That if you take mine and see that many mines were not addressed, some are taken out of context, some are actually distorted. And then take a look at Dr. Young's report and see what they missed. Now, with respect to the borings, I was really pleased to hear about borings being done. But they don't indicate what year they were done. I'm curious if they, maybe you might get copies of the data on borings for yourselves to see? Because the DEC didn't mention what those were when they went. But the fact remains, they don't have the borings that Dr. Young requested. He wanted the borings to go straight down to the water table in many locations to find where it was. So the problem with only 16 feet borings on a 60-foot deep land is that you might have what's called perched water. Hardpan will play to make like a rock and water in between two layers of hardpan. Again, I'm only telling you what's in Dr. Young's report. So if you get a perched water, people may think that they're having a spring from the water table. They may actually be getting their water from a, from a perched water. So when that is, when, when he, he may go down like, say, he goes down 60 feet, he thinks he's above the water table. You know, they look for the water to go in this particular line, but that part might be different. And it may be driven down, but all of a sudden, he's not eating water table, he's eating perched water. And this is something that Dr. Young, in her personal communication, he said, he had a nightmare of experience with that at a mine in Rochester. They hit the perched water, all hell broke loose with the wells. So they weren't even anywhere near the water table, but the perched water affected the wells. So the thing to do is, as you said, you're, you plan being very thorough. So I just want to remind you that when you're reading the comments to the DEC, please take the original comments that you know you have from those of us who've sent you copies. Okay, I think there are a couple other people who've sent comments to the DEC, who also send comments to you. So that this way you can watch and see what the DEC actually addressed, what they didn't address, how they addressed it and whether it all makes sense. Because you are allowed as, you know, you are allowed as your town to have a different opinion about the secret. You're not allowed, you know, you don't have to completely swallow it all whole. So it is important, as you know, we do know what we do.
Thank you.
Very much for listening.
Thank you.
Like, uh, Lynn Steve Killen. I was having a talk the other morning and I talked to a contractor who sold Mrs. Fisher a bike. Let's take a look at the gravel that were taken about a half a mile on the other side of the creek from his proposed mine. No oversight, no DEC, no permits of any kind. There was no concern about water when she got gravel. No concern about environment, no concern about historical preservation, no concern about Indians. But she didn't care about the trucks that are built in the 70s that leave oil all over. None of that bothered her, one was for her gun. That mine can't be more than half a mile downstream from this site. So that big steel she had was nice, but the pollution was probably coming more from her mine than this one allowed. Thank you.
Uh, if I could, uh, address the word about some of the comments that you just heard. Okay, before I contracted for the work, I asked exactly where everything was coming from, whether it was a mine that needed a permit. And I was told that less than 1,000 tons of years taken from that mine and therefore it is not required and for her. So just so that you know, that it's not actually accurate, that I didn't care or I didn't make requests.
I have a question of you.
Me?
Yeah.
Sure.
Here's all the emails from you. I don't see that Dr. Young, who is he and where in here?
I'd be very happy, I'd be very happy to send it again, to make it easier for you to find.
Okay, because I can.
I can do that, I'll send it to you.
Or give me the take.
Uh, I can have it on hand, but I'd be very happy to send it again and then that way it'll be fresh and you won't have to know for it. But basically, everything you got is where basically the DEC got. So the fact that they only had 16 pages of comments, it's a shame, not all of that, I'm sure they didn't really deal well with this. But I'd be very happy, I'll send you my comments again and I'll-
I don't need your comments.
Oh, you got mine?
I- I just need Dr. Young's report, please.
No problem, I'll send it there, thank you. Stevie, somebody has one right here, has a copy right here from Ms. Waterman. But I, but I can, I can email it to you anyway, just so I'll teach you people, if they feel well distracted.
Well, maybe our evidence, yeah, but she's done it with the take.
Good man you are. Like the comments? Yes, sir.
And then there were, uh, Mr. Flito there, he said he had them to do with mine over 85, uh, haul gravel or something like that. He has concerns with us and something like that, but he does haul gravel out there for reselling. And also, last meeting he had, I approached the board, I asked him, talked about some pictures of all the mine over, uh, in Western Row, right off of 49. You guys want me to get some of your other mine, I have pictures here of that mine. And I want you to see what it was like after, it was supposed to be all finished off, redone, it looked nice. And all of them stopped all the work, almost, and that. So I have the pictures from the board.
Whose mine is that for my clarification, sorry, I wasn't here at our last meeting. Whose mine is that on Western Row, in Western now?
I don't, we don't know. We'd like the pictures, bring them up there.
Oh, what mine is this, I know, something on Western, who owns it?
This is a Rattelli's mine, but the same principal is spooked up and-
That is-
Fuck ass, dead. You know, it's only gonna be this big and we're only going this deep, but once they got the permits to do it, they kept getting their permits, there's what your mine looks like now. It used to be a square, it's not a square. It's, that's filled up in the last two years like that. Now they can't, it's a big mine square. So they, they, they went 180 feet deep.
Once they get it ready and we start doing whatever, you know.
I'm standing 20 feet off the rope there and the edge of the leg is probably 30 feet in front.
Any other comments?
My trucks, I haul a lot of Grandy, that is true. But that doesn't mean that I face the road obviously.
Oh, you said you had nothing to do with that mine?
I don't have anything to do with it. I don't mine out there, just the truck hauls out of there.
Why do you have your trucks? Yes ma'am. It's part of our commitment, that everyone hauling-
I'm a county streamer, I do each too.
It's part of what, uh, Grandy Mine Committee, everyone hauling from the mine permit must adhere to the permit regulations. And you're having here too. Whether it's subcontractor, subcontractor or a selling truck, doesn't matter, everybody using the law.
Is that part of their special terms or part of their DEC?
Part of whatever permit covers the mine, covers every truck hauling gravel from that mine. And there's a lot of them besides the selling.
Yes, um, I was wondering if the board could find out where there are pits on the Mr. Colito? So that any of us who might want to drive by would take a look. Obviously, we wouldn't trust them, so I just, I just thought maybe, is that something you might, might-
58A of Mexico, you know, 58A of Mexico is the only one I got.
58A, thank you. Anything you can reassure us, it's a good thing to know.
Anything else?
I'm gonna go through there.
Thank you, everyone. That is gonna be chilly out there. A little darker from the 90s. There's pictures on there in the back and the letter to the DEC, they're in the mail. Thank you.
It's, it's written, it takes place, it's a, it's a Brandy. I think it's, I know, it's a town that is, it takes place, yes. And there's this young woman, a teenager, she goes and does, and she gets interested, it's a story.
Now, do you know this?
With the condition that the city investigates the big ones.
I need to say, this community, I'm willing to call this. Yes, it's, it's kind of, they were, yeah. There was one that was there, I don't know who it was, yeah, they were- I think this is, because that's a, it's a, yes, they can change the decision. We can say, we can, we're, no, we're here, we can try. Because the process now for this, this for return, to break the rules. And so that's why I'm not spending a lot of time doing this to make sure.
And then, and then tell them, so give us that.
This wasn't as bad as I thought it was going to be. This wasn't as bad as I thought it was going to be. I thought it was a little close tonight. I figured that's probably a different condition. Mr. Max and Mr. Eagle. Yeah, and how is it? I don't know. You know, just thinking. This is. Yours doesn't make all of our. I'm like, I'm like, I'm like, I'm like. 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 It's because. I've got to run down to the conference. We've got to find the keys. I call my head. So Julie is so. I mean, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just. I'm just. There's no problem with you signing in here? No. No problem. We are, we are, we are. This is really good. Okay. That would be. It would be great to say, just starting with this. I have all the, I have, I have. I think it's the big one. Yeah. It is. Oh. All right, I've got to run down to the conference. I'm going to. Yeah. I think you guys are already. Yeah. I just have the video of the.
The other way is going to get out there. You're on one of those roads. You're on one of those roads. It's a conversation. The guy's in front of you. You're. You're. It's pretty. It's about the other guy. They're all there. More than I expected. Hold on. I see. I see. I see. I see. He's got a car. He's driving the dollars for sale. He wanted, yeah. He wanted to sell like a, 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 a. He's got a car that was previous owner. And he works a partnership. I'm disappointed. Cut it down. He's got a fair ownership to it. He cheats something. So now the court is taking it. The court is trying to sell the whole of that. I heard. It's like.
Oh. Well, what?
It was a lot too.
Just rounds around?
Yeah.
Oh. Was it a, was it a? The yours?
Yes.
I mean, the ones that have not been built on.
Yes.